This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, if everyone would please mute themselves until they're ready to speak, that would help ensure good audio quality. It's now 7:09, 7:08. We're calling the meeting to order. Ginny, would you read the Attorney General's opening meeting, open meeting announcement? Unmute. That would be helpful.
Yes.
All right. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Brooksbury Library Board of Trustees is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted, but every effort has been made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. Members of the public who would like to join the meeting live may do so using the link on the agenda or the phone number provided. This meeting is being recorded and will be shown on Channel 18 and available on demand on Channel 18's website and YouTube page. Okay. I'm Joanne Brown, Chair of the Board of Trustees, and I'll be running tonight's meeting. We'll start with a roll call of the other trustees who are present. Lynda Sebula.
Present.
William Crowe.
Present.
Kathleen Remillard.
Present.
Bernadette Waystack.
Present.
And Jeannie Wheeler.
Present.
Also attending are Library Director Ginny Hewitt and Assistant Director Emily Mylan. Our Board of Selectmen liaison, Stephen Ford, is unable to attend this meeting. Okay. Approval of the minutes of February 3rd. The minutes were included in the packet. Does anyone wish to make any corrections? Well, may I have a motion to approve them?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, Bernadette moved, made the motion, and Jeannie made the second. I'll do a roll call vote. Lynda Sebula.
Accept.
William Crowe.
Accept with a comment that with all due respect to prior minute takers, these are excellent minutes.
Agreed.
Very.
Joan McCarty isn't here. Kathleen Remillard.
Accept.
Bernadette Waystack.
Accept.
Jeannie Wheeler.
Accept.
And I, Joanne Brown, vote, accept them too, so that the vote was unanimous. Public comment, do we have anyone who's joined us online or called in that would like to make a comment? Please identify yourself for the record and then make your comments. I don't hear anyone. The first thing I'd like to say is could we have a, let's have a moment of silence for Senna Fernandez, who died recently. She was a trustee from 1998 to 2001. And I'm sure we all know her from the community center also. Okay, moving on. So Ginny's report, the report was included in your packet. Does anyone have any questions or comments about Ginny's written report? I don't see anyone raising their hand, so Ginny, do you have any additional information you'd like to, to report?
Yes, a couple of things. So most of my time the past month since, since we last met was working on the budget, which seems kind of, might seem surprising, but we, with the budget being level funded in the fall, there wasn't too much room to really look at things. And I didn't have the time when, when we were open our hybrid schedule of inside access and curbside. So I was kind of doing more of a deep dive on what, you know, really looking at what we would need, what our expenditures have been in different categories, so that we have that documentation going forward for future budget years. And, and also, we had spent quite a bit of time over the past month working with the Council on Aging and trying to keep abreast of changes with the COVID-19 vaccination programs. So we were looking at options to assist, or whether we could develop a local program. But in the end, if that happens, we likely won't be needed to assist. But as you probably know, the counties and towns have, on the Cape, have formally joined forces and creating their own equivalent of the state's mass vaccination sites. So hopefully there'll be some improvement there. I just wanted to mention, we, should I talk about the space planning workshop we attended now, or do you want to do that under facilities?
Oh, let's talk, let's talk about that later.
Okay. Just one other thing I wanted to mention from our CLAMS meeting last week. CLAMS, the consortium, had subscribed to 50 online magazines through Overdrive, which patrons already used to for eBooks and audiobooks. So we've liked that because patrons like that. They, they know what source to go to, so all the content was in one place. Well, this fall, Overdrive changed the vendors that they use for the service, and we now had access to 3,000 magazines, which was great, but it was a temporary thing till the end of the contract year on June 30th. Then the cost would have gone from 23,000 for the consortium to 40,000. There was no option to select a smaller amount of titles. So we were concerned that we were possibly going to lose access to that if, if the CLAMS member libraries didn't agree to pay for the service. So anyway, they have, fortunately, they have reached an agreement where we keep the 3,000 magazine collection for only 25,000. So it's about a $2,000 increase, which isn't bad. So it's excellent news because that use of online magazines has gone up tremendously since that, you know, since the size of the collection grew, surprisingly, you know? Anyway, all a plus because it's always hard dealing with those vendors. They really like to restrict and really make libraries pay more than necessary for that online content. So that, that's good news. And that is all I have.
Okay. Emily, Emily Mylan had a report also. Does anyone have any questions for her or comments about the report? Okay, Emily, would you like to, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I do have a few things to add, Joanne. Thank you. So the report looked back at February and a lot of the things that were going on during that month, and I wanted to give you a little preview looking forward. But first, I want to say, things are going extremely well with Jamie Thornton, our new staff librarian. She has really jumped into her role and taken over a major responsibility for our social media page, our website, and some other things. So really enjoying working with her. We're going to be focusing this month on setting up some goals, so we hope to have her year-long goals established by the end of the month. So just wanted to give you an update on her. She included her first report in the packet as well. A huge chunk of my time in March is going to be taken up with the Know Your Town podcast. I started with recording the first segment yesterday with Fire Chief Dave LeBlanc, and it went extremely well. Very happy with the response from department heads getting involved in this podcast program. I know it's new and can be a little intimidating, even for me, in the recording aspect, but I think it's really a valuable outreach tool and information sharing opportunity for community members to learn more about town departments and how COVID has impacted operations over the last year, various aspects of departmental budgets and that sort of thing. So I'm really looking forward to it. But with 15 or 20 of these to record over the course of the month, there's about a half an hour to an hour of prep work that goes into each one, another 30 to 45 minutes of recording, and then I anticipate about an hour of editing to really kind of pull things together. I want to be able to present each department head with the final recording for their approval before it is actually published. So, you know, each segment with each department is going to take somewhere from two to three hours. So when we're looking at 15 to 20 town departments over the course of a month, it's going to eat up a huge chunk of my time over the next couple of weeks. But I think it's a really valuable endeavor, and I do want to continue to push forward to make sure that the podcast gets out there by early April at the latest. And we'll probably start rolling episodes out ahead of that. But so that community members have access to that information before town meeting. So we have that going on in March. I mentioned in my report that we started a new discussion group. Oh, and Bernadette, I wanted to say thank you for your email regarding the Know Your Town podcast. I appreciated that encouraging email. So thank you for that. We also started, the Four Agreements Discussion Group started yesterday. So this is kind of a new format for us at Brooks. We often do book discussion groups, and this is based around a text, The Four Agreements by Don Miguel Ruiz, but it's a four-week series, so we'll be meeting each week for an hour on Tuesday mornings. So it's kind of a new format, but the first, the first meeting went extremely well. Jeannie joined us, and I think we had a lovely discussion. We have a nice group of people who have decided to join us, and it's definitely something I'll consider offering again in the fall. But I like to kind of flip-flop, and when I offer a program a second time, offer it in the evening or at an alternative time, so that people who aren't able to join during the day can join in the evening. So I'll look forward to bringing that back in the fall. But that's another program that requires about an hour's worth of prep time each week plus the hour of the meeting. So I anticipate that it'll be somewhere from like a 10 to 12-hour commitment over the course of the month. So between those two things, I have a full schedule, but I'm very excited about both endeavors. I think they go a long way to meeting some of the library's goals and objectives in terms of community outreach and providing information to community members. So they're both really exciting and new things to be doing. And I just wanted to check my notes. Yep, I think, I think that would, oh, I'm, one more thing. Another surprise that popped up in the last week or so, we received notification indirectly about the closure of one of our vendors. Library Insight is a product that we use to manage the library calendar and our museum pass reservation system, and they will be going out of business at the end of the year due to financial implications of COVID. He has decided to close the business, so he'll be supporting the project through the end of our contract, which expires June 30th. And he'll also be offering a temporary extension through December of this year. But another big project is working with Megan Green, our executive assistant, and Joanne Klingon, one of our senior library techs, to kind of start the planning process for how we're going to select and implement a new calendar software and museum pass reservation system. Megan brings the calendar piece. She's really been the primary person responsible for maintaining our calendar, while Joanne has been responsible for the museum pass registration side. So I think calling them both, we're going to have a meeting mid-March to kind of discuss the, the process. And I'll be delegating a lot of that early work to them, to go out and research the products that are out there, see what our other options are, and then we'll go from there. But this, this will end up being a year-long project essentially as we work towards shifting to this new platform.
Yeah. Oh, there's a lot going on. Lot going on at the library. Well, thank you. Thank you, Emily. Ann Carpenter, Youth Services Librarian, and Jamie, the new staff librarian, have reports. Any comments about these reports? I just wanted to say that, that Ann's video of what she had done with the Flat Friends overnight was just great. It's, it's a shame that more people didn't participate. But I can understand that it certainly was cute, and she has great ideas. Okay. Building and Grounds Committee, Jeannie, do you have anything to say? Unmute.
I think Emily can bring us up to date better on her conversation with Beth and Scott Slavin, who may be building some shelves, et cetera, since she had direct dealing with them. So Emily, if you'd like to bring everyone up to date on that.
Absolutely. Over the winter, Joanne, Jeannie, and Ginny and I met with Beth Williams of Beth Williams Interior Design, who's worked with us on projects at the library before. And we specifically looked at the circulation office or the space behind the circulation desk where we have previously had two staff workspaces currently during COVID. We only have one staff workspace in that area, but we were looking at ways to make the space a little bit more functional. It serves both as storage for office supplies as well as a staff workspace and staff mailboxes. But there are a few things that our part-time staff have never really had access to, which is storage for their personal belongings while they're working in the library, along with any professional materials that they may need to store. Everyone right now has a mailbox that's approximately three inches high by 12 inches wide. It's not a lot of space to store materials for projects that they're working on and that sort of thing. So one of the ideas that Beth came up with was a locker system. So staff, part-time staff would have access to locked cabinets where they could store their personal belongings, as well as a mailbox above. And then our circulation assistants or substitutes who aren't in as frequently, they don't have regularly scheduled hours, would have a cubby system for storage. She also advised in closing one half of the room to create a storage closet so that it's not all out in the open. You guys may be familiar, Bernadette, you probably don't miss them, but we have some cabinets and shelving from the middle school. So as you know, it often happens in the town that as one building closes or renovates, things get passed along. So we have some brown storage cabinets that came from the middle school when the middle school moved to Chatham and the building purpose changed, that really aren't functional. They're too big for the space. They're not really accessible for staff. So we worked with Beth to come up with a plan, which I have shared her draft plans along the way with the Building and Grounds Committee. We selected what we thought was the, the best of the three plans that she presented, and she went to Scott to get quotes for the project. So I shared that information with Jeannie and Joanne and Jenny. I don't know if you guys have any other feedback. I think everyone was pretty happy with the final plans. I do need to, I do need to check in with Beth because the, the final drawing that she shared with Scott did not modify that last locker space to be the cubbies that I referred to, which would be storage for our circulation assistants. So we need to make sure that that gets updated. But I guess the next, the next step is just, you know, looking at what our final budget is for the project and deciding how we want to proceed, either in phases, doing the staff workspace first, or the lockers first, or where we want to go from here.
I have a comment.
You have a comment?
I have a comment. So I've told you before, I've disclosed before that Beth Williams is my wife's sister, and she, she was doing work for the library, design work for the library, before I married her sister. But I also, and I, and I, and she does an excellent job. I also have personal experience with Scott Slavin, who you mentioned. He does excellent cabinetry work. So he's bringing in a good person. Good craftsman.
He has done, he's done a project or two, a very nice project for us in the children's room.
The Friends, yes, The Friends paid for that work. He's done some work there. Also on the Friends book sale, shelving in the lobby, so.
Yes.
So, so maybe we should put that on the agenda for next month, some options.
That sounds good. Right. As I mentioned before, Steve is not with us this evening, so he doesn't have a report. Do we have any correspondence, Ginny?
We don't. I just wanted to go back to you. Did you want to talk about the space planning workshop that we, Jeannie and I attended? I just wanted to say it was excellent that Board of Library Commissioners put it on, on space planning. Like, some of it, you know, wasn't that applicable to us since we're not doing a building, but what I thought was interesting was they, they made a point of, you should never, three key things, never underestimate the need for storage or meeting space or staff work areas, all of which our project, last renovation project did, and we, and that's like what we've been struggling for, for the past 22 years, trying to find that storage space and staff workspace. And so, so they said, never sacrifice staff space to create public space that staff functions need a certain amount of time. And that goes into storage because the less space you have, the more crowded and congested everything is. Anyway, I thought that was kind of interesting. That's what I took away from it.
It was, it was really very nicely done. It was what, a half hour? And then there was time for, plenty of time for questions. And they have a nice book, online book that you can refer to. So, and they, they planned on doing more of these online. You know, you've noticed before, they, they offer plenty of different workshops for us, but they're always so far away. And to drive a long way for an hour or a half hour just isn't very tempting, but this was, this was well worth our time.
I think it's nice to see there were three consultants from the Board of Library Commissioners attending, and I thought that was nice. It's nice to see who the people are and get to know them, you know, feel more connected to the Board of Library Commissioners that way. This week, I, I think it was, it, it, the, the program was on recruiting trustees, which was more applicable to an appointed board of trustees. But they do have a nice series coming up of regular programs.
So please open those, those emails when they come. Okay, moving on to old business. Is there an update on library operations during the COVID pandemic? Or are things moving along as they were the last couple of months?
Yeah, things are pretty much, things are going pretty well. Everything seems to be running smoothly. The book bundles have been well received. The Friends have a book cart outside, and that has been popular. I, well, I guess that's it. We had a department head meeting on Tuesday, based on the governor loosening restrictions combined with other local health data, like looking at the number of vaccinations in the community, the number of cases, not only the number, but the number of severe illnesses and hospitalizations, you know, different data like that. The town anticipates potentially opening Town Hall to the public by appointment sometime in April. So we'll be watching that closely. We wouldn't begin to allow inside browsing again until sometime after they think it's safe to have appointments in a public building, because we would get a much higher volume of patrons coming inside, and they would stay longer. So it's not just dropping off a form. We have done, started some planning, well, obviously, we're always planning, but doing some concrete planning for the summer on the hope that we can do some children's programming. We have reserved the park for Wednesday mornings for storytime. You know, we still have to be finalized for that, like how we would do it, whether we would limit the number that can attend and how we will ensure families stay apart and things like that. But that's, at least we have that option with the park being right across the street. We can do it outside in good weather, and, and not, obviously, we're not going to be doing any programming inside. No big gatherings. And during the summer, I mean, you know what the summer volume is like. We could get, if we had inside storytime, we've had 75 people there. You know, and that, yeah, especially when there's going to be not other big programs, there's not going to be puppet shows or magic shows. So that means some of the more, the staff-led programs that tend to be smaller, like a storytime, those could be large, and so we're not going to have that inside this year.
No. No. And the budget update, you did give us a budget update. Give your report.
I have some news. Yep, so we got the money back for our, you know, we had, we had to eliminate staffing in order to level fund, and we got that $7,000 back. And that means that we will meet the municipal appropriation requirement needed for state library certification, as long as that article for Howard Fort and Chase Library passes at town meeting. So the budget now is in the hands of the Selectmen and the Finance Committee, and they could still make amendments. So they have now scheduled our budget hearing, and the library's hearing will be on Monday, March 15th, during the Selectmen's meeting. And we are still waiting to hear what questions or advance information the Finance Committee may want, so I will email you a complete budget package prior to that meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I had asked earlier, and you said there aren't any monetary donations this month. Okay, we'll move on to the trustee reports and requests for next meeting's agenda. I'd like to poll the trustees to see if you have any reports or comments or feedback from yourself or community members about anything we haven't discussed tonight. Are there any issues or agenda, on the agenda, you'd like on the agenda or to receive a report on at our next meeting? And I'm going to, like I said, poll the members. Bernadette Waystack, is there anything you'd like to bring up?
No, I've got nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Jeannie Wheeler.
No, but I'd like to ask Ginny, did Ian Cahoon ever bring the painting over?
Yes, I meant to tell you that she, just last week, she was just up, they were painting the condo, and, yep, so she dropped it off. Yeah, that was great. It's beautiful.
Good. That's all for me. Do you have anything you'd like to bring up?
No. Not tonight.
Okay. Lynda Sebula.
Nothing, thanks.
Okay. And William Crowe.
Hey.
This is being recorded.
I think that it's obvious that the, you folks are doing a great job of keeping the library alive and everybody's minds alive, and you should be commended for it. And we're going to hit the, when we do open up, we're going to hit the sidewalk running, from the sounds of it. And mentioning Ann Cahoon, Jeannie, is making me feel old because I replaced her mother, Eileen Cahoon, on this Board of Trustees. That's who I replaced back in 1980.
Well, you are old.
I am old.
I, I was going to say that.
Oscar Cahoon and the whole family, Jimmy Cahoon and Maggie Cahoon, the whole family.
Wow.
So I think I'll say, Bill and I both had the honor of being on the board together with Senna. So everyone knew us in the community center too, but when I first joined the Board of Library Trustees, I was there with Senna, and she was wonderful.
She was.
We didn't mark the fact that last year was Bill's 40th year on the board.
We don't need to, thank you.
We just established he's old.
Yes. You just marked it. That's sufficient. Thank you.
Okay. Then next coming.
I think that, if I may, I think that Charlotte Sims, when I came on, Charlotte had just, was just getting off, and it was like her 42nd year or something, and.
Really?
Yeah, she had been on a long time.
So you've got another year to go. So you've got another year to go.
Yeah, I'll hang in.
So Bill, I don't know if you're aware of this, but Charlotte's granddaughter-in-law works at the library, Carrie Sims. She works in Youth Services. Awesome. Yep. I didn't know, I, I, Carrie worked here for a long time before I found out that she was related.
Charlotte was a substitute teacher sometimes when I was in elementary school. So it all, and, and I was put in charge of buildings and grounds. And I looked up at the gutters. On the second, you talk about replacing the roof, the gutter was chock-full. They had moss growing and little trees growing out of the gutters. They hadn't been in like 25 years.
Well, that's better than a tomato plant a few years ago. Okay, our upcoming meetings and events, our next meeting is April 7th. There'll be that much more sun.
Well, now the Monday, March 15th is the Selectment's meeting. I don't think everybody, you know, if you can't come, you know, I'm sure that's fine, but it's remote anyway, so we would just be joining online.
Okay, but you'll be get, you'll be forwarding us the links to that. Yes, well, so the, so after that, we'll have the next trustee's meeting, April 7th. And then after that, May 5th. We have spring to look forward to, folks.
March 15th is the Ides of March, is it not?
Yes. So I'll, I'll have to be careful on that day.
No, the Selectment will have to be careful and the Finance Commission just tell me where.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second?
Bill moved, Bernadette seconded. Okay, the roll call vote. Linda Sibula?
Accept.
William Crowe?
Accept.
Kathleen Remmellard?
Accept.
Bernadette Waystack?
Accept.
Jeannie Wheeler?
Accept.
And I, Joanne Brown, vote to accept the motion to adjourn. We're adjourning at 7:41. Thank you.
Good night, all.
Everybody, good night.
Good night.